Push that, and the red light comes on, and then talk. And when you're done...
When you get closer.
Well, it is 6:03, and I call this meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the invocation of the flag of the lady.
Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for the day, we thank you for the opportunity to...
Thank you for the opportunity to be together as a board. We pray, Father, that you will bless the people who are here, whether attempting or actually governing our city. We pray your wisdom among them. We pray that each and every one of us have a spirit of love toward one another, and we pray that the decisions made will strengthen our community and strengthen our resolve. We pray of healing over our land, we pray that this COVID be taken care of, that you bring healing to us.
Whether we consider God, in the United States of America, in the Republic, or we just say, "One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all."
At this time, uh... So go ahead and, uh, go to the resident's remarks. And, um, Mr. Andres Lopez would like to, uh, say a few words.
Yes, uh, I would like to take this time to publicly thank Mr. Mylum and his staff for the outstanding job they did during Hurricane Hannah. I mean, uh, I know that out there on Henderson Road, we had some problems with flooding, uh, because of the, uh, of the construction. Uh, I, I know I saw his pickup out there in the morning and late at night, making sure that the pipes were draining properly. I also know that he was all around the city, making sure that things were working. Not only him, but his, his crews. And, uh, outstanding job. I know that his persistence with, uh, drainage, drainage projects around town, around the city, uh, with the 10-inch rain that we had, uh, my, was my understanding that there was minimal flooding. So I hope that persistence keeps on, and so that the next 10-inch rain or greater that we have, uh, will be just as, you know, will be just as successful as we were this time. So, thank you, Mr. Mylum, and, uh, thank you very much for you and your staff and the hard work that you did. I think, uh, if we all stand and give him a hand, I think it's well deserved.
Add a little bit to that in that, uh, the, uh, issue of drainage has been a problem here in Los Fresnos for quite a while. This is something that we have been addressing or trying to address for years. I think the fact that, uh, we were able to manage this last rainfall as well as we did, uh, indicates that we have made a lot of progress. And, um, again, Mark, uh, the staff, the city council as well is involved in making those decisions with regards to, uh, drainage. And we, uh, after this, or before this particular rain, we had another rain that was, uh, pretty bad as well. And we did have flooding, and we had water in homes. Uh, my instructions to Mark was that we did not want any more water in homes. And my understanding is that this time around, that didn't happen. We have a few more things, uh, that we are going to do to improve even more. And we were one of the few cities that, um, drained well. And again, it's because of the fact that we have, uh, worked together, and we have taken care of problems that we had by addressing them with the different irrigation districts, with the county, with everybody that's involved in helping us to fund gra- our drainage projects. So drainage is a very important issue. Mark and his staff, yes, uh, he was out there this time, but Mark has always been out there during all the past hurricanes that we've had, while he has been in office, and while I have been in office too. So, um, it says a lot for Mark. Uh, Mark is doing an outstanding job. This is why, um, I don't have a problem with, uh, most of the decisions that he makes, because, again, it's been a learning experience for all of us. And he's doing a fantastic job, just like the rest of the city staff and the council as well. So, again, I want to thank you as well, Mark.
At the last meeting, we had, uh, two problems, uh, presented by our residents, our taxpayers. And one of them was at the Peterson, the old Peterson House, that's a daycare center, and we had a really ugly situation. And I want to report that as of today, it's been repaired. Mark, uh, amazing, they did an amazing looking job. Both problems were taken care of. So you're a hero once again, Mark. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go ahead and proceed with item B, consent agenda. Were there any questions with regards to the consent agenda? I think Councilman Munoz is trying to say something.
Yeah, I want to pull, yeah, I want to pull number three. Hello? Yeah? What? Let me, let me see. Hello, okay. Tom? Okay. Yes, uh, I just wanted to pull out number three to ask a question on, on question...
On question.
Item number three.
Number three?
Okay, then, um, I'll go ahead and make, well, we'll go ahead and pull out number three with discussion, and then we'll vote on all of them, okay?
Okay.
Uh, item three says, "Consideration and action to approve a maintenance agreement for the drive-through tube system." Mark, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, uh, I wanted to ask, Mark, do we have some kind of warranty on that, on those, right now, Mark? Or we don't have no warranty on those?
We'll go ahead and do that, then. I thought we'd go ahead and discuss and get it out of the way, and then move on all of them, but, okay. Uh, then, uh, we'll go ahead and nominate a motion to approve items one, two, four, and five as stated. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, is there a second?
I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded that items on the consent agenda, items one, two, four, and five be approved as stated. Any questions, or any further questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Okay, with regards to item three, consideration and action to approve maintenance agreement for the drive-through tube system. Mark?
Yes, no, uh, I was asking you, Mark, do we have some kind of warranty on this one right now, Mark, or no?
Yes, it's a one-year warranty.
One-year warranty? Okay, so it ends on, on 20, on 21?
In November, and then this starts.
Ah, okay, okay. Yeah, that's what, that's what I was gonna ask you. You, you have, sometimes they give like a four-year warranty or something like that, this one.
It's a one-year.
Okay, that, that was my question on that one. Thank you, Mark.
Are there any other questions with regards to item three?
Thank you.
If not, I'll go ahead and move that we approve item three as stated. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded that item three of the consent agenda be approved as stated. Any further questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. We're gonna go ahead and go on to the action items. Um, number one, consideration and action to approve a service agreement with the Cameron County Fair and Livestock Show. Uh, there are gonna be a question...
I had some questions, uh, with, uh, Mr. Mylum earlier in the week. Uh, I'll wait for him to get here so we can...
Okay.
So we can go over those, uh...
Sure.
Concerns.
So we come to Los Fresnos, we have the queens contest in January that we hold at Los Fresnos High School. Dr. Virginia Miller is in charge of that. And the girls compete for, to be the queens of the Cameron County Fair and Livestock Show. And then the 2019 or 20th queen goes on to be the rodeo queen, um, and they get awarded a scholarship from the rodeo committee. And then we have 450 kids come out here on average, um, for the livestock show competition, um, that are here with their parents and grandparents and so forth. I think Mr. Lopez had a question for you, Mark.
Yes, I had a discussion earlier in the week with, uh, Mr. Mylum, and, uh, I was talking, uh, that, uh, with him concerning when we did, uh, when I visited the, the show this, this past spring, uh, as I was walking through, I saw that, uh, some of the lighting was kind of dim, and maybe, you know, we needed some lighting in there and, uh, some other, uh, improvements. And then I was looking at your, uh, at your proposal, and in your proposal, you're giving the city back roughly about $350, uh, worth in tickets.
Yes, sir.
My recommendation to, uh, Mr. Mylum was to, instead of tickets, why don't we, you propose to, let's say, improve the lighting in that building over, uh, a period of time. And I'll let Mr. Mylum go from here, 'cause... Okay, I'll, I'll, I visited with Valerie about that, and she said it is, you know, up to y'all as a, as a council. Uh, she's willing to do that. They always take money and put lights, or, uh, the other one you mentioned was, uh, ventilation, you know, fans and stuff because of the, the, um, animals. So, um, I, I think she's good to do whatever the wishes of the council is.
Yes. And, and lighting is on our agenda, but we've been focusing on building barns over the years, and additions and lean-tos to have more room, because the show has grown since I took over, of about 100 animals to 450 animals. So we've had to concentrate on, if y'all remember, it used to be in tents. And then it was the main barn, and then it was the pig barns, and then the on-in, the little home show area. And this past two years, we've done the big barn for the cattle, the lambs, and the goats. And then we did an office for the committee members. And so each year, we're trying to work on doing something, and lighting is on our agenda. So, you know, if you want us to not provide the tickets to the city, whatever y'all want us to do.
Well, that was just my idea, or my, my, uh, proposal to Mark, that, you know, that improvements to the barn is an improvement for the city and improvement for, for everybody.
Right.
Uh, to enjoy the animals and, and, and the kids and their participation. And so that was just an idea that, uh, I, I brought up to, to Mark. And, uh, obviously, he said, you know, it's up to the board as to what they want to do. It's just, just an idea that I threw out there.
Well, we appreciate any suggestions, and like I said, lighting is on our list to do. This past year was getting the office area for the committee members. So the lighting is on our to-do list to add more lighting to the barn.
Do you have any idea the cost to add more lighting?
No, I don't. You know, we were very fortunate that a lot of the lighting, you know, that we have was, you know, given to us. So we have a connection from AEP, so hopefully we can get some more lights from AEP that have been taken down, out of service for AEP quality. So we're hoping we can get something like that. But if not, we're just willing to spend to get new lighting. But I'm not an electrician, so I have no idea what that would cost.
How long have you been trying to work on the issue of the lighting?
Just this past two years, sir, because we, once again, we've been concentrating on building the barns. And now that the barns are up, we realized we had to take lights from this side to put over to this side, so we would have ample lighting.
And you do see it as a priority?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm wondering how these 32 tickets are used? Are they used for enhance the pop show for our kids?
So those tickets, the, so the rodeo and the livestock show have had an agreement since the beginning of time, as far as I know, is that the tickets would be used for Cameron County to provide to their sponsors or supporters, city being one of them. In exchange, we would give them a ticket, which would get them a seat in the rodeo. And it helped the rodeo to fill the seats and to prove, to increase sales for the vendors inside the rodeo grounds. So that's why the tickets are in exchange for the supporters. Does that make sense? So, yes, because the tickets go to the supporters of the livestock show, but when we give the tickets to the city, okay, Mr. Mylum has been the one responsible for distributing them to those employees of the city that might benefit from coming to the rodeo and the livestock show to see the grounds and the animals and so forth that might not be able to afford a ticket. So he chooses to give it to those employees that might not be able to afford to come to the livestock show and rodeo. Correct, Mr. Mylum?
Yeah, I've provided each of you, uh, a listing of, of where those tickets go. Um, I've been directed, for as long as I can remember, to first, um, if there's any business prospects in the community, that they go there. If there's any, um, current businesses that maybe are gonna enhance their, their structure and, and increase their building, or, or increase their presence in our community, to offer them to them, uh, to go to the council for any suggestions, um... And then, if, if there's any left besides that, um, to do raffle through the employees. And so that's what we've done historically, just because that was my, uh, what I've been asked to do. So... It's a pretty good listing of... Yeah, yeah, at the bottom, I said, when I put various employees, I, I've got a whole list of them, but it would have took two paper, two pages to give that. I, I can give that to you. Uh, it's, you know, we, we raffled, uh, an employee said he has a family of four, and so, uh, another family had, you know, would have three, another family would have five, and so they, uh, would draw, and they would win those tickets. And so those tickets would go to that family.
I think the question here is, if we do not get the tickets, will they help you in any way, shape, or form to try to get the lighting done?
I'm sure that it's not a, a one-time thing, $350, but if you collect $350 in the next couple of three, four years, you're, you know, it'll build up, and, uh, it'll go, go further than just the one time. Just an idea.
The other issue is, you do have sponsors like AEP and those kind of people that can provide in-kind services to help with those kind of issues, no? And do you utilize them? So there are alternative ways of obtaining, uh, the services, if need be. And also the proceeds from the livestock show? Do you utilize those for that, or just for scholarships, or whatever it is that you use them for?
Child has a breed champion. They're getting buckles. So we're giving out a lot of buckles during the year, okay? And then, um, even the home show and the shop projects are getting buckles as well. And then, so we have sponsors for the ribbons as well that the kids receive. Each exhibitor gets a ribbon. The Pee-wee kids get a trophy, so we give everything back to the kids. We've also been giving back, back money. So if they have breed, grand, or reserve, and breed champion, and first-place animals, they got back some monetary money as well, depending on how much money we had from the various sponsors besides the city. The city has had a lot of the money designated in the past going towards building improvements, the barns and lean-tos, but also towards scholarships. So last year, we gave out $10,000 in scholarships. The past two years has been $10,000 in scholarships.
You've been serving the community well as far as that goes.
Well, we try.
Thank you for that.
Mark, I have a question. You know, one of the, number one purposes that I read about the, of the CDC is to promote the use of our community. Is it legal for the, uh, for the CDC to be approached, uh, help out, like this? They do, it, they do as well, it's in their budget. It's in the budget, okay.
Yes, sir, I met with the CDC last week.
I, I mean, for as long as I can remember, we've always done things this way, and, uh, I, I don't see a problem with continuing it. Uh, what do you think?
I'm open for suggestions. I'm here, we're appreciative so much of the support that the city has given us over the past several years. If, without the city's support, I truly don't think that we would have moved to where we are at right now. We would not have been able to afford the, to come out of the tents and build the barns if it had not been for the support of the city. I can tell you that honestly. Because before the city started supporting us, our other support, our other sponsors just allowed us to cover tent, tent rental, and we had no money for scholarships. We gave zero dollar in scholarships. We gave zero dollar in premium money. So without the city, we wouldn't have built what we've built.
I love the job you're doing, and personally, I want to support whatever you want, or I would rather you tell us, 'cause, uh, I personally am here to support you.
Well, we appreciate that, and, you know, if you wanted not to take the tickets, we'll greatly put that money into use into lighting or buying some big fans for around the barns. I don't know, we'll figure something out.
Or perhaps if we increase the amount, can you separate some to go towards the electrical stuff?
Yes, ma'am, we could do that.
And start building, you know, the, uh, the amount to...
Yes, ma'am, I can get my buildings and grounds, I can get William to, to look at that and, and get an idea of what it would cost for extra lighting in the barns, and give y'all an idea in next couple of meetings. I mean, I'm sure he's busy trying to harvest or salvage his crops right now, but, um, I can get him to work on that. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the, uh, service agreement with the Cameron County Fair and Livestock Show as stated. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded that we approve the service agreement with the Cameron County Fair and Livestock Show. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor?
Can you give me direction whether you want the tickets that it calls for, or you want that to remain, uh, with them to, uh, do a project with? That wasn't, uh, clarified. We're, we're good either way.
I think, uh, I would like to see an increase at least of $500, and those $500 go directly to a fund to improve the lighting. And with the tickets as it is.
An increase of $500?
$500, you mean equal $6,000, correct, Mike? With $500...
Yes, that's correct.
With $500 set for the, uh, electric.
Can you just say the total amount that you're recommending?
I recommend $6,000 for the, uh, Cameron County Livestock Show, with, uh, setting $500 on a, uh, fund for the electricity.
Beside the $6,000? Or with, okay. Okay, motion has been made or seconded? I'm sorry, motion has been made?
Just, just a second, Ms. Mary, you're gonna have to rescind a second, rescind the first, if, if you're gonna change the motion. You, you, you've got a motion on the floor to approve the agreement as is. You just didn't specify, so if you're gonna change it to...
And they will approve the amount?
Figure, you gotta ask Mr. Herrera if he wanted to withdraw his second, and you withdraw it first, and then another motion. Or you can just go ahead and vote for that motion, and if it fails or passes, then you take accordingly, uh, action accordingly.
I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying, Mark, with your mask.
Okay, you, 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 there already is a motion on the floor for the service agreement as it is. I, I was just asking what you wanted to do about the tickets, whether we want to keep the tickets in there, or allow them to keep that, uh, extra funds that go, goes towards lighting. And, and so there's a motion, a second, to do that. Mrs. Herrera brought up a whole, whole new thing to, uh, increase it to $6,000 with the 55 as is and the 500. is and the five hundred to go to lighting or, uh, ventilation or whatever project they, they want to do. That is fine, but you, you already have a motion and a second. So you either have to vote on that motion to pass it or, or have it fail, or the two people that made the motion and the second need to withdraw. One of those things needs to happen.
Okay, the, the motion that I made with, with regard to the service agreement, and there was no mention of any money or anything like that.
That's true. I would, I would wanna see it stay as it is and just take it slowly by, by year for next year, and maybe we can help them out on the lighting for, prepare ourselves.
Go ahead and, um, ask that we vote on the motion which I made and was seconded. Okay? Those in favor signify by saying aye with regard to the service agreement, and then we'll go back and discuss the other issues and decide how much we're gonna provide. Let's follow the agreement.
Mr. Chairman, uh, somewhere along the line, we need to have discussion on the motion.
We need to do some discussion. Okay, then, is there any other discussion with regards to the motion?
Yes, I, I wanna get Mark's opinion on, we're, we're giving him more money and how he feels about spending more money. I, um, I want the blessing from Mark before we approve more money.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you comment, Mr. Chairman.
The, the motion on the floor is not to give any extra at this time. The motion on the floor is the, the agreement as it is, fifty-five hundred dollars. What I questioned because there has been two discussions. One is to leave the tickets as part of the package or two, remove the tickets. And so I asked for clarification on the motion. Did your motion include the tickets or the remove the tickets, and then did Mr. Herrera understand that when he seconded it? That's what we've got to clarify.
Mark, uh, are you even supposed to be discussing the motion, or, uh, I mean, I made a motion regarding the item. And then you threw in all these other things with regards to the things that, uh, some of the other people had recommended, which is fine. I don't have a problem with it, but this motion, the way it is written, it doesn't speak at all in any way to the amount of money that we're gonna be providing. Now, if that's what we want to do, then indicate an amount will, and, and, and the amount has been indicated. I, if you, if I need to redo my motion, I'll redo it. Or if I, if we need to, I'm just trying to cancel, I mean, vote on it. If you wanna deny it, deny it. If you wanna vote, or vote in favor of it, fine. I don't have a problem with approving the money for the lady. I just, now I'm all confused. I don't know how to do it.
Chairman, I withdraw my second. If you withdraw your motion, it's, it's over.
Okay, then, if it's necessary to start over again, I withdraw my motion. Okay, then, um, then, is there... I'm, I'm asking that somebody make the motion then with regard to what it is that we want to do. I made the motion earlier that we approved the service agreement, but I'm adding to that that we approved it in the amount of six thousand dollars to include the five hundred dollars, which is gonna be used for lighting improvement at the livestock show. Is there a second to that? Motion has been made and seconded that we approved the service agreement as stated in the amount of six thousand dollars, which is going to include five hundred dollars for lighting improvement. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Just to confirm, the tickets stay as they were. Is this correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that, that's the way he made the motion.
I didn't hear anything.
And then added the five hundred to, to go into a project.
I would like to see him stay the same, since we're adding another five hundred dollars. Any other questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Suppose, say, nay?
Nay.
To nay? Motion carried. Item two, consideration and action to approve sponsorship funding for the twenty twenty-one Los Fresnos rodeo. Do we have assistance in rodeo?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gomez and Mr. Bruce are here. Um, before, I'm gonna step out, but before, uh, they come, once again, I talked to Mr. Lopez about similar thing about, uh, maybe some of the tickets not be, um, given to the city, and in lieu of that, the, the, the rodeo work on a, a specific project, whether it be, uh, um, Caliche, a, as you know, probably that would always be needed, uh, paving somewhere, uh, building something, constructing something. Um, and I've talked to Mr. Bruce and Mr. Gomez, and both of them are on board with that. If that's your wishes, uh, they don't, they don't mind either way. Uh, they'll, they'll do whatever, uh, you wish to do because there's always improvements that the rodeo is doing year after year, so. Before they speak, I wanted to be sure that, that they knew that, that I visited with, y'all knew I'd visited with them about that, the same, same question about the tickets.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Mr. Mylum, uh, on behalf of the Los Fresnos Rodeo Committee, uh, we want to thank you for, uh, giving us the opportunity to come here before your night and, uh, ask for the sponsorship, which we'll get to in just a minute. Uh, Mylum is George Gomez, in case you don't know me. Jerry Bruce, we're founding directors of the rodeo committee. Uh, we're here in place of Mr. Mike Todd. Mr. Todd, our chairman, passed away about a month ago, the seventh, uh, of, uh, last month. Um, we ask that you keep Mike Todd and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Uh, we appreciate that very much. Um... Just to let you know, um, you're probably wondering why, uh, we want to put on a rodeo, uh, in the middle of this pandemic. Well, I wanna make sure, make you rest assured that, uh, the committee has decided that we will vote on November the nineteenth of this year whether to proceed with the rodeo or not. It's not a definite yet. If we decide we do not put on a rodeo for twenty twenty-one, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-first, uh, we would not ask for the sponsorship package, uh, monies. If we do decide, uh, we would ask for the sponsorship. Uh, rest assured again that if we do put on a rodeo, uh, we would follow all the CDC, state, local, county, uh, guidelines, COVID-nineteen guidelines to the T. We don't want to put anybody at, at risk, and, uh, we will, that's gonna be a big consideration for us to, when we make our, our decision. So, uh, we, uh, we just wanna put that up front. So November nineteenth of this year, the committee will decide whether to have a rodeo or not, and we'll let you know probably the following day. Um, we love Los Fresnos, uh, we love our rodeo. I think it's a big asset for the, uh, community. We appreciate your sponsorship every year. I know you've been with us through thick and thin. Uh, this pandemic has, uh, posed a heck of a challenge. And believe me, we've, we've had challenges. We've had ice storms, uh, no power, uh, flooded arena, um, you name it, freezing weather, fog rolled in, couldn't see from here to the chair. Uh, there are lots of challenges, and we take them on head-on, but this pandemic is, uh, something, something different. Uh, I think Mr. Mylum, uh, or Mr. Todd, and Mr. Mylum had sent you the sponsorship package, which is a platinum sponsor, ten thousand dollars, a Skybox sponsor, fifteen hundred dollars, and a Saturday concert sponsor, two thousand dollars, total of thirteen-five. I think that's, uh, what you, uh, the city did last year, and, uh, we would appreciate your, uh, support, uh, for the twenty twenty-one rodeo. Any questions you might have on, on rodeo?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
My concern with the tickets again is, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Martinez Desi, uh, and, uh, we were discussing, uh, ways of improving, uh, the, uh, how the, the money is used so that we get more bang for, for the money. One of the, one of the comments that he made was that he was there on a particular, I don't remember if it was Saturday or Sunday, and one of the skyboxes was empty. And he made the comment that if he would have known, he could have invited some port commissioners, county commissioners, somebody that, that's out there that can put, uh, Los Fresnos best interest up front. So my whole thing about the tickets is, let's utilize them so that the image and Los Fresnos is up front, and if we can get some extra support from a commissioner here or there, well, better for it, you know? Uh, the way Mark handles the tickets, it's not a problem, but there's always room for improvement.
Oh, yeah.
And that's where I'm coming from.
And we, we're willing to do any, anything you guys, uh, request. We'll, we'll work, we'll work for the tickets or no tickets, um, whatever it takes. We're not, we're not hard to work with. We're local and we understand, understand the situation.
Our problem, what you just mentioned, skyboxes are sold. We don't know whether people are coming or not. They have their tickets in, but they, they have a pass to come in, and they show or they don't show. We can work on that in the future with, uh...
We can work, we can work on that in the future with, um, with Desi, with the rodeo committee and the sponsors to make sure who is and who isn't gonna be there. That may be a big advantage to y'all. And working with Desi, he's, he's very close with us. He helps to promote rodeo all over South Texas. So we work hand in hand. That's not a problem. Uh, we just wanna continue the, the, the growth of the rodeo. It's gonna be a difficult year, like Mr. Gomez said, uh, but we're, we're, we're willing to take the challenge and hope that we can put, keep Los Fresnos on the map. Um, we've put a lot into this over the years, and we don't wanna see it die because of something like this. So that's all I have.
That was, that was my, uh, recommendation to Mr. Uh, Mr. Mylum, was that, uh, we would set up a committee with Desi, the mayor, and the council, and think ahead, because it's like anything. If, uh, if you invite a, uh, somebody, uh, hey, let's go out and do this, uh, this afternoon, well, they may have other plans. But if we can talk to commissioners and, and this and that ahead of time and let them know that, hey, we're gonna invite you and so-and-so on this day, uh, please come and enjoy our fair city and the rodeo. So thinking ahead and letting them know and letting, you know, with Desi being at the front, uh, so that these tickets then are utilized to their, their, uh, best potential.
That, that, that can be addressed. Not a problem.
And have you asked Mr. Martinez if he's willing to take on that role?
We talked about it verbally. He said he'd be okay with it. Uh, but here again, it was just a conversation as we're, uh, just talking.
I have a question, Mr. Gomez.
Yes.
Any tickets, have they ever been given to a radio section to give them away free? Would every time, y'all do, do that? I'm not familiar. Okay.
K-Tex gives away a lot of rodeo.
K-Tex gives away rodeo tickets daily.
Okay.
In advance. Um, they're one of our big promoters, have been for many, many years, and, um, part of our sponsorship package. JoJo has done a fantastic job. Patch has retired, so he's not, no longer involved with it, but he still comes out and he'll be part of the rodeo. But, um, they give away quite a few tickets. Um, I don't know if any of you all listen to K-Tex. Come rodeo time, that's all you're gonna hear about. So, um, we're on the mat. We want to stay on the mat.
I was gonna make a comment also with regard to this issue, and that, uh, we've always done it this way. Uh, not to say that we shouldn't change it, but, uh, at the same time, the rodeo itself attracts a lot of people to our community. It brings a lot of people into our community, and our businesses are utilized and made more in resale tax revenue. Uh, people come in, they'll spend the night, um, at our hotel, and this is the only, one of the few events that we can sponsor with the Heds and Veds Fund. Uh, this money that we use for the rodeo and for the livestock show comes from the Heds and Veds Fund. It doesn't come from the general fund or from any other taxpayer revenue that is brought into the city, okay? And the purpose of that money is for, uh, activities of this nature where people are gonna come in and spend the night and, of course, utilize the hotel. That brings in more tax money that we can utilize for these events. And, um, the CDC has their funding. They get plenty of money. Uh, their job is to, uh, help the businesses that are already in existence first bring in some more, but that's also the job of the city and the city council, the CDC, and, uh, the Chamber of Commerce as well. Anytime that we have a new business coming to town, I mean, I try to make it a point to be there for the grand opening because I, I feel that the business is made to support. So far, I think, from what I've seen, we're doing well. Um, last month and the month before, even though we had this pandemic, Los Fresnos was only one of two cities in the entire valley that came out on the plus side of resale tax revenue. This past month, we... This past month, we were up like fourteen percent. Other people, other cities were minus. As far as businesses doing well, then Los Fresnos they are, because the people here are very good about working here and spending their money here. And other people that come to town and come to activities such as the Los Fresnos rodeo do the same thing. When, when, when the rodeo occurs, all the businesses are full, especially the red stripe. And that's because of you guys, and you guys, the Los Fresnos rodeo committee has really put Los Fresnos on the map, not just in Texas, but all over the United States. So I think that what, what we need to continue doing is just doing what we're doing, because it seems to be working. And unless you guys think otherwise, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing things differently, but since I was a councilman, since I've been mayor for the last eleven years, it's going very well, and things have improved significantly as far as the rodeo committee goes and as far as the city of Los Fresnos goes as well. So I think you guys have a lot to do with that. So, I mean, if, what's the saying that they use? If it ain't broken, don't fix it? I, I, I think that things are working well, so I think we need to continue with what we're doing. But again, I don't have a problem in changing, but I would recommend just, just continuing what we're doing.
The question was never to change. The question was never that it's broken and we need to fix it. The, the comment that was made, and it was made by me, was to better utilize the tickets. All I said is to better utilize the tickets. We have two thousand, approximately $2,300 in tickets that the rodeo committee gives back to the city. That's $2,300 worth of advertising that the city can have towards improving, improving the, you know, the image and, and, and bringing more people to the city during this livestock show and rodeo.
We, we'll open arms for many suggestions. Mark talked to us about that. We think it's a fantastic idea. We'll visit with Desi along with Mr. Mylum, and we'll get this thing worked out. We'll make it happen. We just hope that things are straight by the time, you know, who knows, you know? That's really all we have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the sponsorship as stated in the proposal for the rodeo. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that we approve the sponsorship funding for the 2021 Los Fresnos rodeo. Any other questions or discussion? All right, then, those in favor, say the phrase saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed to saying? Item three, consideration and approval of a resolution with respect to the Texas Water Development Board Drinking Water State revolving fund relating to approving a resolution by the city council for the city of Los Fresnos, Texas authorizing and approving obligation of motive of interest to issue certificates of obligation complying with the requirements contained in Securities and Exchange Commission Rule fifteen C two dash twelve and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Don Gonzalez is here from the Stradine Hosa. They're our financial advisors, and he'll go over probably three and four together. They're, they're separate items, but he'll probably cover them together so he can do one, one talk and then handle three first and then four second. This has to do with the, the money, the funding for increasing our water plant and upgrading our water plant to two thousand and ten stand, two thousand and twenty standards, and the upgrades on the sewer that we've been talking about for some three to maybe even four years. It's been, been a while when the study was done, and so this is getting close to the
Members, for the record again, my name is Don Gonzalez with the Stradine Hosa. We serve as financial advisor to the city of Los Fresnos, and I believe Mr. Mylum's handing out the presentation that we're going to go over. On the cover page, what we're looking at today is $3,625,000 of certificates of obligation that are associated with the drinking water SRF fund from the Texas Water Development Board. order to be able to issue the bonds at a later date. So on page one, we have the different entities that'll be participating in the transaction. Obviously, the city of Los Fresnos, Stradine Hosa and Company is financial advisor. Norton Rose Fulbright is bond counsel. The Texas Water Development Board will be the purchaser of the bonds. On the bottom left side, you'll see the Series 2020A drinking water SRF funds. We're looking at borrowing $3,625,000. The amount that will go into the project fund under the uses is $3,430,003. The Texas Water Development Board fees associated with the origination of the loan is $71,078. The estimated cost of issuance are $123,919, or total of the $3,625. We estimate that the borrowing will be paid back over a 20-year period, since the useful life of the assets is much longer than that. The estimated interest rate is 1.37%. I know you've been probably following interest rates, and they have come down quite a bit. If we were actually borrowing this money today, we would actually be at a lower rate than what it is right now. We won't be actually locking in rates with the Water Development Board until the first week in October, so we need interest rates to stay low for about another forty-five days. The intent is to try to get this done as quickly as possible, since the Water Development Board just approved this, I guess a week and a half ago. We're moving quickly to, to get to this point and start the clock ticking. On the bottom right-hand side, you'll see the Series 2020B, which is for the Clean Water SRF program. We'll be borrowing $1,600,000. About $1,500,000 will go into the project fund. About $27,500,000 will go towards the Water Development Board fees. An estimated cost of issuance at $78,160. We estimate that interest rate to be at 1.27%, also going out 20 years. Both of these transactions are not rated, so when you think about being able to borrow at these very low interest rates without even having to pay a rating, says a lot about the, the city of Los Fresnos. Any questions on, on this page? And moving on to page two. There's a lot of numbers on this page, but if you'll, you'll bear with me, I'm going to kind of move from left to right, and in, if you focus on column B for 2021, I'm going to move from left to right, going across on that, that particular line item, starting with column B.
Yeah.
So the net assessed value for the city that we received has gone up to $277,754,275, almost a seven percent increase in the net assessed value for the city of Los Fresnos. And I will congratulate you on that, because there's a lot of cities, particularly in this environment, that would like to see that growth. I believe, Mayor, you made a comment earlier about sales tax being up, and there's a lot of cities where it's not up. The city of Los Fresnos, your sales tax has been increasing even during these times, property values going up, so very, very positive signs economically. If we move to column D, you can see the existing debt payment, which is principal and interest that is pledged, not necessarily paid by the tax rate, but is pledged by the tax rate to be paid, is $1,443,413. In column E, F, and G, and then H, I, and J, this is where the new debt service, the principal and interest associated with the new loans from the Water Development Board will be added to the city of Los Fresnos. Again, keep in mind, we do not have final interest rates yet, but these are estimated right now at the 1.37 and 1.27% that I described on the previous page. So in the first year for 2021, for the drinking water SRF, we don't have any principal payment. We have interest only at $37,523. And then in column H, again, no principal in 2021, but the interest is $15,353. That would make in column K, the total principal and interest that the city of Los Fresnos has pledged, it's just under $1,496,289. There is TERS revenue that the city entered into a few years back, and in column L, you see for 2021, there's $214,670. So that's an amount that will go towards the payment of debt service, as well as existing debt service that's being paid by the water and sewer utility. In column M, $652,734. Associated with the new debt in column N, you'll see that there is $92,675 that, based on rate increases, that will go towards the new debts payment, and then an additional contribution from the CDC of about $83,000. In column P, then you'll see we have a net tax-supported debt. That's actually the amount that the city would be paying from the tax rate, not being paid by the CDC or the utility system revenues, at $453,210. That would bring the tax rate right around 17 cents. So it'd be pretty similar to what you've had in the past at around 19 cents. Obviously, you've not adopted your budget or set your tax rate yet, so these are estimates. But the main thing that we're trying to show here is when you look at the debt that the city of Los Fresnos has, as well as this new debt, and then you factor in the amount that's being paid by the utility system and the CDC, we're not anticipating any tax rate increase associated with this debt. Any questions with, with this so far? So we basically carry that same calculation on down, and you can see the tax rate pretty much stays in the neighborhood of around 17 to 18 cents until we see the TERS revenue go away, and that's in 2027. At that point in time, we also see that the contribution of the utility system goes down. More than likely, my guess is that you'll probably just continue making that same contribution, and there won't be any tax rate impact, but that would be up to that decision in 2027 when that, when you get there. So again, these interest rates are not final. This process today merely starts the clock ticking, causes two publications to go into the newspaper. So if you go to page three, you'll see the timetable of events. So we're here on August the 11th with the city commission action regarding the notice of intent. There'll be two publications in the newspaper, so one tomorrow and then one a week later on August the 19th, and that starts the clock ticking. We have to let 45 days go by before we can actually issue the debt. We would then look to be setting interest rates from the Texas Water Development Board on or around October the 6th, and once those interest rates are set, then we would be looking to come back to city commission for final approval, and that would be on October the 13th. And on, on that date, we would actually have final interest rates for your consideration, but we have to let that 45-day period elapse. During that 45 days, just so that you know, it's a, there's a potential for a petition to be brought by the citizens of Los Fresnos if you, if they wanted to force this to a vote of a, to be general obligation bonds. So at this point in time, certificates of obligation under this 45-day period, that's what that period is for, and that was deemed so by the Texas Legislature. With that, if, once consideration is brought forward on October the 13th, if the council decides to approve those bonds at those interest rates, we'd be looking to close on or around October the 29th. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. I would like to say my thanks to city manager and to your director of finance. We've spent quite a bit of time, many actually years now, working on this and, as well as with your engineers, to get this project to this point, so it's nice to be able to actually start the clock ticking. So that's all you, you'd be doing today is authorizing the starting of this and the publications in the newspaper, and also that same information has to be posted on the website starting tomorrow as well, and then that would have to remain in place for the full 45 days, and actually, it's best to try to keep it there all the way through closing, which would be the end of October. And as I mentioned, interest rates are, are very attractive. We actually are doing a number of these financings for a number of clients right now. We are, we locked rates for another client last week, and their total interest rate came, came in at just under 1% for 20 years, so it's incredible. If you're going to do capital improvements, we're actually seeing a lot of cities saying, anything that I might be thinking about doing in 2022, I may want to accelerate it into 2021, or as soon as possible to take advantage of the low interest rate environment. So congratulations on, on getting to this point, and we're appreciative of being part of the, part of the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I guess we're going to do number three first and then number four. I move that we consider and approve, approval of the resolution with respect to the Texas Water Development Board Drinking Water State revolving fund relating to the, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll go ahead and second the motion. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed do the same. Motion carries. Next item, item four, consideration and approval of a resolution with respect to the Texas Water Development Clean Water State Revolving Fund related to approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Los Fresnos, Texas, authorizing and approving publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation complying with the requirements contained in Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15E 2-12 and providing an effective date.
I'll throw a move, Mr. Chairman.
Did you make a motion? And you seconded it? Okay, motion has been made and seconded. That we approve the resolution with respect to the Texas Water Development Board Clean Water State Revolving Fund relating to approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Los Fresnos authorizing and approving publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation complying with the requirements contained in the Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C 2-12 and providing an effective date. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed do the same. Motion carries. Item five, consideration and action to recommit the funding match for grants and engineering to place the main feed irrigation canal underground through Los Fresnos.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. If you'll recall, back was December 2018 and January 2019, that this was before you, for the city to provide a $150,000 match for a Texas Water Development Board grant. And it was applied for. And subsequently after that, there was also an application made to match that $300,000 with another $300,000 in order to put the irrigation canal underground, starting at O'Reilly's, moving towards the north and then to the east. The original, the original application of Water Development Board was not funded, and so we utilized that funds for something else, and so we were kind of worried. But the Bayview Irrigation District also applied again and did get the funding, and the funding was for 200, right? For 200,000. And so they now have a grant from the Water Development Board for 200,000, a grant from Bureau of Reclamation for 300,000. And so what we're asking is to recommit that $150,000. We have those funds available because of conservative budging through time, and so we want to appropriate those funds. That will give us... How much is that, Patty? $650,000, I believe. And then, in addition, we had said that we would provide some engineering $12,500. We also have that in the budget. The Irrigation District will also match that, as well as the engineer will also do some in-kind donations with that. So we think we can get that irrigation canal at least to Nogal Street. It will probably be further than that. I would love if we could get to 1847. So all we're asking tonight is recommit those funds. They're available. If you'll recall, one of the big selling points for this for us was the fact that if it gets underground, we made an agreement to be able to utilize that area for a hike and bike trail, but we can also utilize some of it for drainage for us. The big piece is along next to Mr. Peterson, behind O'Reilly's, is Mr. John Peterson owns some property, and there's no access to that drainage that's used there. So that gets underground, we have access to clean that and maintain it. So it's a win-win for us. Here tonight is, I think, both presidents of Bayview Irrigation District, Mr. Whipple and Mr. Walzendorf is president of the Irrigation District 10. And if you have any questions of them, I think everybody's on board, and man, it'd be something awesome to see in the lower valley. The upper valley did this some five to 10 years ago and got ahead of the game, actually 10, maybe 15 now. So it's good that we're seeing some of those funds come here. To have that kind of grant funds is unheard of, so it's a good time to take advantage of that. And I'll open it up to any questions myself or any of those.
Mark, does this include being able to funnel fresh water and the recycle along the nature park and across the street?
No, it does not. That is not part of the deal. We have another, we're working on another project to do that. This would be a little hard to make it happen that way. But we're working on a project that would go from just north of the high school back to the south. That's the way we do it now, but we pump it. Engineers have done a study, and the elevations are such that we can gravity feed that if we put a pipe in. So we're working on funding for that as a separate, a good question though.
And, Mark, we're looking at doing it all the way to 1847?
What they're going to do is, I think the design is going to include there, they just don't know, you know, when you do estimates, and that's all they are, is estimates until you get an actual contract. And we will hopefully, as a group, be able to structure that bid, the bidding on it, to have a base bid and then an alternate if the bid's coming low, that you can add that alternate to go there. And maybe it's just a few more dollars to go there, and we might choose to do that between all of the parties. So we'll have that option if we need it. And could be too much, and we can't afford it, but that would, that would be wonderful if that could happen.
Thank you. There any other questions? And of course, this will help with the drainage improvement too, so whatever we can do to improve drainage is good. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve funds of $150,000 plus $12,500 engineering to match the project for the main pre-irrigation canal through Los Fresnos.
I'll second.
Motion has been made that we approve at recommitting the funding match for the grant as stated by Mr. Agartha. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed do the same. Mine was an aye as well.
Thank y'all, can't wait to get started.
Item six, consideration and action to increase rates for garbage carts.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is one of the things that we need to address every so often. Since I've been here about every five years, as the cost increases for garbage collection 3% to 4% a year, about every five years, it gets to the point where it's costing more than we're charging residents. So we're very close to that point. At the end of this year, when they, they'll send us about a 4% increase, we will be within a few cents of that. And so with that in mind, we have stretched it out already this time, instead of five years to seven years. And so we've done our part in really trying to keep costs down to a minimum for our residents. We don't like to go up just a few cents every year, because then if I'm a resident, I'm mad every year. And, you know, we can do one jump, and then we can hold it for five to seven years. And so my proposal is to go up to 2250. It is still much, much cheaper than what people in the county areas pay. They pay, because I'm one of those, $100 for three months. So it's quite a bit cheaper, and they actually do a better job, even though it's the same people, it's just that we have this contract, and they've got a lot of customers right here. So I am concerned because of the area, times we're in with COVID. It is 250 a month for a year, that's $30 that'll impact a residence. I'm mindful of that and can always concerned when that happens, but I think it's something that needs to happen and not delay another year. And so that's my recommendation.
Mr. Mylum, if we increased this year, how long will that be good for? I mean...
History says that five to seven years. The two times before, when we went up 250, it held for five years. This time, it's, the last time we did it was seven years ago, it was 2013. So five to seven years. The increase that we get is not a solid 4%, it has to do with the CPI index, Consumer Price Index, as well as another indicator that has to do with diesel fuel, because that is one of their main costs is diesel fuel. So it's calculated in there, and so that's why it's five to seven years.
You mentioned that the economic situation that we're in at this point in time, could it be possible to hold off for about six months and see if the future is going to turn to the better? You know, where the residents will take this increase in a better light than right now when they're stay-at-home, they got a curfew, many of them are not working. Don't know what the funding would be if we were to hold off for at least half a year?
If we held off six months, you can see that it's, it would be an increase for the city of 60,000, so you delay, you would cut, we would need to cut our budget by 30,000 to make that happen. If we held off till, instead of October 1, March 1, no, it'd be April 1, which would be six months, we would just have to adjust budget for that amount. On the page, I think page 71. If we don't do anything, revenues will be about 15,000. If we go up to 250, it'll be 75, so that's a $60,000 increase over the year from, you know, we got some 2,000 or so account, so the 250 adds up.
Did I understand that the next increase would be seven years from today?
It would be five to seven years before we would need to increase again, because it just doesn't go up that much per year. So that's why my recommendation is go ahead and do it October 1 and don't delay it, and then we're good for another five to seven years at that amount.
And it would only cost each customer $2.50 a month more?
Yes, sir.
Or $30 a year?
That is correct.
I don't know if $2 a month is going to make that much of a difference with regard to an individual budget. The other thing is, I don't know if this pandemic is going to be over in six months. I think it's going to be with us permanently.
Well, within six months, maybe. If you listen to Fauci, maybe we'll have a vaccine. Who knows? You know, and $2.50 a month is not much if you have a budget, but some of these folks don't have a budget. So I don't know, it's half of this and half of that, so it's a tough decision.
If I may ask, if we, instead of waiting five to seven years for the next increase, could we possibly increase in increments? Say, instead of a 250 increase, cut that in half and make it $1.25? And keep that for about two, three years, and then raise it again another $1.25?
You can do either one of that. Our practice has been just to take a jump, you know, 250, I'm not making wide of $2.50, but it's two bottles of water over the next 30 days a person would not have to buy. And I know some people don't have any, and I agree, Mr. Lopez is there, but 250 is not a large amount of money. But you are welcome to, as a council, to delay it, to change the figure, is okay, and I understand the reasoning for doing that. I still recommend the 250, October 1.
You think it's a problem, we postpone this for next year and see how it goes on this pertaining to the COVID-19. A lot of people are unemployed right now, and, you know, it's not that much, but I don't know, we can postpone it for next year, and next year we can raise, do what we plan to do today.
You can do that however you all decide. I just make the recommendations, you don't make the hard decisions.
True.
But if we do not do an increase, it's going to cost the city 60,000, is that correct?
Yes, we will then have to adjust the budget by that, whatever amount that you do. The budget we're going to be presenting to you, some tonight and some next Tuesday night, we'll adjust it by that amount, cut something somewhere in order to make that match.
I just think it's lack of empathy to the people that are really suffering now if we raise it. I just think it's lack of empathy to the people that are really suffering now if we raise it.
Perception is a, is a big, a big word here. Weighs a lot.
The way the situation is right now with the pandemic, it's really difficult to, to foresee what the six months or even a year from now will be like. It could be better, but the way it's been going, I think it's going to be worse.
We're number one in the nation. Our county is.
What, what if we tabled it? And see where we would have to cut the budget? And if it's not too bad of a cut from the budget, maybe not do it and have the city take on. But if it affects the budget so much, it's a possibility we're going to have to pass it.
I don't think it'll affect the budget. It's just we arranged in some numbers.
I'm kind of leaning more toward what Mr. Ortiz said about going with half of it. If we, if we need to, after we look at the budget. But I'm, I'm in favor of tabling it till after we do the budget and then address it then.
Is that also an, an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to do as Mr. Ortiz said? To, instead of the two, two twenty, two, 250, go down to one fifty, 125?
Like I said, it's, it's y'all's decision. I just, you know, give you the information and, and y'all going to make a call on what you feel is best, best for the city. Once again, my recommendation still stands at 250, but y'all can do zero. You can do one dollar, two dollars, nothing. I'm, I'm good with that. We will adjust the budget to fit what your, your desires are. That's what, that's what we do and, and we'll do that very well. And, and with good gusto, if, if we need to do that, we'll be fine. However, that works out.
I move we table it till after the budget and see where we go from there.
I think that's a, a good idea because once we look at the budget and see how it's going to impact whether we increase or not, then we can have a better idea of how much, if any, or none at all.
What, what was your statement, Mr. Ortiz?
Mine was not a motion. It was just to comment that perhaps it's a good idea to wait until we have this budget workshop, which is not very far away, a few days from now, and see what kind of an impact a, an increase, whether it's 250 or a dollar 25, or none at all. See how it's going to affect the overall budget.
I was going to say, it does impact the budget, but at the same time, Mr. Lopez is concerned about the, the impact it's going to have on the consumer. And the fact that there's a lot of unemployed people. So there's, there's two different things. There are one is the budget and one is concerned about the consumer. So I guess we can look at both of them and determine what's best for everybody.
Is there a motion on the floor to table?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lopez made a motion to table.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion. What was it?
The motion was to table the item, yeah, item number six, to table the item number six till after the budget meeting.
I second that.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded that we table item number six. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed to saying, motion carries. Item seven is consideration and action to utilize excess funds from 2019, 2020 fiscal year to purchase a patrol vehicle, a digital fingerprint system and computer equipment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again through conservative budgeting and conservative spending, we have some, some funds that we can utilize that, to purchase some items that we're really recommending for this next year's budget, but there's no way they can fit in next year's budget. We have the funds available and, and today in this year's budget. One of them is a patrol vehicle to replace a 2015 model that has over 160,000 miles. That's a, a lot of miles for a patrol vehicle. The other one is a fingerprinting system. We do it the old fashioned way today with the ink. And it takes a long time to get fingerprints back. If we go to the, this digital system, we can get that information back within the matter of hours instead of days and sometimes weeks. And then there's a miscellaneous computer equipment that is listed there in your packet, a server, UPS rack mount tower, some other servers and some computer equipment that we can purchase now and freeze up money for next year's budget as well. We need to do that in order to continue with the budget for next year and not raise property taxes. So that's my recommendation is make those purchases. We do have the funds available.
Mark? Mark, is it legal for us to purchase something like this before the budget for next year? Or is it all right for us to do that right now?
It's, it's for this year's budget. Yes, it's, you approve it. It's okay for us to do it. We have the funds available in this year's budget.
Take into consideration that these are surplus funds, which are, they are there in the budget, so might as well utilize them. And it won't affect next year's budget.
Actually, it helps next year's budget. Otherwise, we would be this, all this $87,800 would be in next year's budget and we would have a lot more problems than what we will have.
I make a motion that we accept to utilize extra funds from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year to purchase patrol vehicle, a digital fingerprint system and computer equipment.
And I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that we utilize the excess funds from 2019, 2020 fiscal year to purchase a patrol vehicle, digital fingerprint system and computer equipment. Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed to saying, motion carries. Item eight, consideration and action to acknowledge the finance director's certification of the estimated ad valorem tax collection rate for 2019 and excess debt tax collections for 2019 tax year.
In your packet on page 73, you'll see that those dollar amounts, first, the collection rate is in excess of 100% because when you factor in the, the prior year's debt collections. And then we have a, there's, there's no additional excess funds. The fund balance is 8,214.30. We had enough to cover all of our debt and, and pay our debt as, as needed. So we just need you to acknowledge that report.
Excuse me. I will move that we do so, recognize the finance director's certification of the estimated ad valorem tax collection rate for 2019 and the excess debt tax collections for 2019 tax year. And I guess congratulate him on wonderful work.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that we acknowledge the finance director's certification of estimated ad valorem tax collection rate for 2019 and the excess debt tax collection for 2019 tax year. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to saying? Appraisal and action to acknowledge the Cameron County appraisal district's chief appraisers certification of the 2020 tax rule. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, on page 74, and then there, all the way up to page 90, you have the, the information from the appraisal district. Our tax roll taxable value is 291,000, I mean, 291 million, 262,400 dollars for, for this year. All of those pages mean something. If, if you'd like to know more about that, Pablo and I will, will be glad to meet with you offline because to go through every page, it would be, whoo, be tough. But, but we can do that. We know what they mean. The, the appraisal district knows what they mean. And we, we roll those into the budget. And so we acknowledge, need to approval, acknowledge their, their certification of the tax rule.
Any questions? And then I'll go ahead and make a motion that we acknowledge the Cameron appraisal district chief appraiser's certification of the 2020 tax rule. Is there a second?
I second it.
Have been made and seconded that we acknowledge the Cameron County appraisal district chief appraiser's certification of the 2020 tax rule. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed to saying, motion carries. Item 10, consideration and action to acknowledge the calculation of the city's no new revenue and voter approval tax roll rate for tax year 2020 and for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a similar item from years past, but some of the language changed due to the, the change in the last legislative session. We used to talk about, what was that name? I'm sorry. We used to talk about effective tax rates. And people never really understood what that meant. So the legislature said they're going to change that name to no new tax revenue. And so now you know the effective tax rate was no new taxes. So now we have to calculate and all of those pages are, are to calculate the no new revenue tax rate. And what that no new revenue tax rate for us this year would be is 68,0752 per $100 valuation. So if we, if we got exactly the same revenue as we're getting this year, we would lower our taxes from 71.5 to 68,0752. The other piece that we have to show you is the voter approval tax rate. And what that is, is it used to be at eight percent, but now it's at 3.5%. So when we do the calculations, that figure is .731151 per $100 valuation. So if we wanted to go above that, 731151, we would automatically trigger an election and we'd have to hold an election for the voters to be able to say, yes, we're going to go above that rate. This is not part of this approval. It's just to give you those two numbers. The, the, the effective, which is a no new revenue tax rate, and then the, the voter approval tax rate. Fortunately, we're keeping it the same. So we don't have to have an election. We don't want that. And so all we need you to do is acknowledge those two figures. Kind of the same thing, but yeah.
Any other questions? Do not all entertain a motion?
So move to consider an action to acknowledge the calculations of the city's no new revenue and voter approval tax rate for tax year 2020 and for fiscal year 2020 slash 2021.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to acknowledge the calculation of the city's no new revenue and voter approval tax rate for tax year 2020 and for fiscal year 2020 slash 2021. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed to saying, motion carries. Item 11, consideration and action to propose a tax rate for tax year 2020. Take a record vote. If proposed red tax rate exceeds the lower of the, of the no new revenue or voter approval. And set dates for public hearings if necessary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once again, we propose a tax rate of 71.5 to keep it steady and the same. This will be the 14th year that we've had that tax rate. We've just kept it. We do have increased values from time to time. This year, the, the increased value is 75,313.49. So what that means is we'll have that additional money in the budget when we keep it at 71.5. We've based our budget proposal to you on that amount of 71.5. And because we're going to receive, it's not going to be a tax increase. be a tax increase to the people as far as the rate, the rate stays the same. If their valuation went up, they would pay more. So, because of that, we, we have to set a public hearing, which is next Tuesday, August eighteenth at six P M. The way this works is each one of you state that you agree with the seventy-one, five, and leave the tax rate the same.
So, we'll go ahead and take the vote?
Yes, a record vote is each one of you. I agree, raise your hand or whatever.
Mr. Arreda?
I agree to propose a tax rate for the tax
Excuse me?
Twenty twenty.
What did you say, Mr. Mayor?
I said I agree.
Tax rate of seventy-one, five.
Who are you talking to?
Mr. Arreda.
Okay, I'm sorry. We didn't hear. He's asking you if you approve the seventy-one, five.
Go ahead and take a vote. If you're... Mr. Muñoz, do you approve the tax rate of seventy-one point five?
Yes, I do. I approve.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz, Councilman, do you approve the tax rate of point seven, one, five? It's the same one we've had for the last fourteen years. Yes? Yolanda, approve? I approve as well. Mr. Lopez?
I approve.
Mr. Lopez approves as well. So, we'll go to item F, acknowledgement of the City Manager's Report. Mark?
I don't have anything specific to go over unless y'all have a specific item that I've listed that I didn't cover good enough for you there. Tried to give as much information as I could on each project.
Any questions? Do not all go ahead and move that we acknowledge the City Manager's Report as stated?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that we acknowledge the City Manager's Report. Questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed to saying? Motion carries. Item G, acknowledgement of Department Head Reports. Any questions with regards to the Department Head Report? Do not all move that we acknowledge the Department Head Reports as stated? There a second?
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded that we acknowledge the Department Head Reports as stated. Any questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed to saying? Motion carries. Item H is the budget workshop. But before we start, I'd like to have a five to ten-minute recess. Are we finished?
No, we'll have a lunch or chop. We need to just take a bathroom break.
There you go, Pat. I always want to start off our budget talking about our people and our employees. What I gave you just now is the ten-year history of pay increase, but also the ten-year history of the Consumer Price Index. If you're familiar with that, Consumer Price Index is what it costs you to live. And over the last ten years, the Consumer Price Index has increased by seventeen point seven percent. Over the same ten-year period, our employees have got increases, a cost of living increases of twelve percent. So, we're behind where we need to be as far as pay, just in the Consumer Price Index, not counting maybe other occupations, similar occupations in other communities and other parts of the state, if some of our employees would move to those locations. So, with that in mind, we've built our budget around a four percent increase. You can see that we didn't have an increase last year. Prior years, it's been three, 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 and it, we're just not keeping up with the Consumer Price Index. And you say, well, what does that really mean? Well, it means that if I have a hundred dollars and it's only worth ninety-five, it's five percent less than, so my purchasing power is five point seven percent less than it was ten years ago. And so, my plight in life has decreased over the last ten years. When I say mine, I'm talking about our employees. And so, that was the first thing that we built the budget around is a four percent increase. And then, as we get through the budget, you can see how that affects. But any questions on that before I move to the next piece?
I agree on the four percent for the employees. They've done an outstanding job, not just with the pandemic that's going on, but the hurricane and all the way around. I think they more than justify a good increase for them.
Did you make a motion?
It's my motion. It's just a workshop in that we built all this in. And then, if, as people have objections to something, of course, we need to know because I need to adjust budget by those amounts in the same way as I go through other items. Otherwise, we'll continue on. So, I guess your input here is needed to continue with that thought or no. Of course, you have an opportunity to revisit that later as you see more information because right now, that's all you have.
But at a four percent, it's not going to break the budget, right?
What does that translate, that four percent translate into, into dollar figures from what, where we are now in plus four percent?
On the, that page I just gave you, the very bottom, it says overall four percent with increase with benefits. It costs for the general fund seventy thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's for every employee. This page that I gave you, the second one, at the top, it says City of Los Angeles General Fund. Look at the very bottom line on the left-hand side. It says overall four percent increase with benefits. The very bottom, seventy thousand, six, sixty-five. That's how it affects the, the general fund. I'll show you the utility fund in a minute, but I don't want you to have two papers because you'll be looking at two of them. But the general fund also, it affects there, and that affects that one twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. That's twenty-five, five, ninety-three, and I'll go over that with you in just a few minutes.
I'll repeat that. Four percent, if you're making a hundred and fifty thousand, is a lot of cash. The people at the top of the scale, the four percent, you know, is just not a fair figure. I think it needs to be broken down into two different categories. One, you know, one for the top wages, maybe two percent and four percent for the lower ones, you know? That's my feelings.
We can do that, but the reason why I started with the page is we're not keeping up with the Consumer Price Index. Whether you're on the low end of the totem pole of wages, or the high end, or the middle, your, your power of, purchasing power has decreased over the last ten years by five point seven percent. And that has been every employee that we have, whether it's the highest paid or the lowest paid. And so, we do cost of living increases in order to try to keep up with that figure. And so, that figure is true, whether it's the low, or the middle, or the high. But that's up to y'all. But that's up to y'all. Y'all can sure talk about that and give us a direction on there. We have never split that before because of that reason.
Mr. Erav, what, where was, if you were looking at splitting it, where would your, what were you thinking as far as the, you're talking just hourly, one and?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your comments.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said I didn't hear your comments. You were saying something about administrators or?
My comment is that 4% is a lot more when you're making $100,000. 4% if you're making $8 an hour is not very much. That's my point, and we need to have different categories. Not one figure for everybody, I don't think it's fair.
You need to categorize certain levels of salary.
Yeah, the top payroll people should not be getting the same percentage as $8 an hour.
Exactly.
So do you have any recommendation?
What I would just tell Nandi is the people, the hourly rate people would be one category. The people that are not hourly, that are management on fixed rate would be another. You know, that's just something to look at, you know. We'd have to look at all, I don't have the salary schedules, you know, right now, but I think it needs to be split up.
What is the hourly, the average hourly rate for our employee?
I couldn't give you that. I wouldn't know that. They're from $10 on up, depending on what their job duties are.
So for, let's say, a person earning $10 an hour, a 4% increase would be what, $4 an hour, more?
Yeah. I think we need to start thinking and capping the high pay and just give the raises to the people that are getting less than $15 an hour.
Just that.
That person would go from $10 to $10.40.
Yeah, just from the top of my head, you know, thinking numbers. 4%, the lowest paid employee would get the 4%. The person next higher up that's making maybe double what this lower one is making, he gets 3%. Or the next category up the ladder would only get 2% and the highest top would only get 1%. Kind of make it fair to all concerned.
I'm OK with that, but you're not taking into account people's earnings in the Consumer Price Index. So then you have some people that will, according to the Consumer Price Index, will be only over the last 10 years have lost. Others will be up to losing by empower up to 4.7%. And so that, in theory, your thoughts are right, but in, as far as Consumer Price Index, it doesn't. And so what you have then, especially at our director's positions, is we don't even meet the market at the rates we're at now, even if you add the 4% because we have kept those low. And so those people could go get jobs, equivalent jobs in other cities and other places, much higher than that. And so that's why you have to continue to pay your directors as well as the guy that is working at the park or the dispatcher or one of the, any of the other ones, equivalent to what the rates are, the going rates are there. And so 10 years ago, we said that whatever rate everybody was at, we said that's a good rate. Well, things have increased in cost over the last 10 years and outpaced what we've paid our employees by 5.7%. And if you, if you start going four, three, two, one, we will continue that problem. And that's something that I don't think that we should do.
I, it's like I said, I think we need to stop capping the high pay and just give raises to the people that are on the low pay, like under 15 or 10, so.
OK, can y'all, y'all want me to do four, three, two, one? Is that what the consensus is? Or Juan, you said none for the higher paid.
That's right.
But it's.
We need to, we need to compromise on, you know, like Ortiz says. Ortiz has a good idea, you know, so if that's what the council is willing to go, I agree on what Ortiz says.
But as directors, they have a lot more responsibilities. I mean, just as an example, Mark is here till all hours of the night and on the weekends.
Yeah, but on some, we need to find out the pays on another city's also. We need to find whether they're getting paid well or they're not getting paid well.
I'll be glad to do that. I really will be because you'll be going back to the 4% for our directors and myself as well really quick. But I'll be glad to do a survey. I love it.
All right, no, I would like to say that mine was just an idea. It was not a suggestion, just an idea of how maybe to proceed. You know, and as far as, you know, you were talking about Mark, I don't see a problem with merit pay for Mark, you know, or an increase in, you know, a raise, if you want to call it that, for the outstanding work that he does and the time that he spends. Mark, right? Now, other people would have to come from his direction as far as recommendations. We don't know how much time they put in or this or that. We do know about Mark because he's visible to us, right? So I don't see a problem in doing a percent, you know, a lower percent for the higher up and then, you know, increasing in pay for Mr. Mylum in this situation. I do believe that the 4% for the hourly wage earners is kind of low. And, you know, do we go back to, to what's happening in the nation right now where it's cheaper, I mean, you earn more staying at home through the incentives that the government is putting out there, you know? So I think we need to look at the hourly people getting a better percentage and then the wage earners, you know, getting paid according to their work output.
I. Kind of leaves us in the lurch anyway as to what to do.
I agree with what Mr. Lopez is saying. I've heard a lot of employers say that they have, they're having a difficult time finding help people to go to work. Why don't you want to work? Because if I go to work, I'm not making as much money as I am by not working. What is it now, 400?
You don't need to be talking into the mic, please.
So Mark, normally you have a schedule that has what the employees are getting paid and the recommendations as to how much of an increase each one is going to get and all of that. At what point are we going to know?
I can, I can get that for you as if we'll, we can go on there and I'll get Jackie to go make some copies and then we'll come back to that.
OK, I think it would be a good idea. And if you could come up with some kind of schedule, I mean, take this money, figure out how it can be divided up so that it will be equitable and take into consideration everybody, including yourself and the hourly employee. See how it works out with regards to the percentages so that we can compare and maybe make a decision. And of course, the amount shouldn't exceed what's stated here so that we can stay within the budget. You think you can do some of that by next meeting or?
Well, if you'll let me, let her go make a copy of what I have, we can go on and then we'll come back to it. And then you can see, I don't know if dollar figures will make you. We don't give dollar figures because it's a percentage and it's based on the CPI index. But she can give you that and then you can draw lines on the one. There's going to be about six. Myself, department heads, and then you'll have a couple in PD that, you know, are a little higher, higher paid than the others. And so you'll see that. So I'll have her do that if we'll, we can continue on in this. Get that before we close tonight.
OK.
OK. OK, we'll come back to the pay. As you see on that page, it says general fund. Some of the things that we're going to budget is a $21,390 for the in-code upgrade. Y'all approved that actually a little over a year ago. It actually won't get completed until this next budget year, so we're moving that money in there. Then we have an employee, Melissa Rodriguez. She's been doing permits and we want to move her a dollar. If she gets a 4%, she would already get the 40, so it would be an extra 60 cents is all. And that puts in line with what we've done with several of the other employees. They start at 10 and go through a period of time. And if they do well, well, then we increase a dollar. And so that's the next one on that page. And then the next one is administrative assistant, and it says city manager, but also it would be multi-purpose. I don't have anybody that directly reports to me, when I say that, besides department heads. I don't have a secretary. Jackie's the city secretary. A lot of people view her as my secretary. That is not the case. The city secretary is an office of the city that is, requires a lot of things that dealing with council, with legal, with notices, with, and we also have her doing HR stuff. So what we would like is a person that we, don't give them out yet because then they'll start looking at them. Let's go through this. Anyway, that person would be for me to utilize, but also for Jackie to utilize. Jackie oversees court, and if someone's missing from court, Jackie has to go do that. If someone's missing from permits, she doesn't have anybody else, so Jackie has to go do that. If the lady that runs the senior citizens is not here, Jackie has to go do that. This is the only department we have in the city where the department head, it would be similar to Carlos having to go get on the backhoe. Not that he cannot get on the backhoe, but if he's a department head, I need him to be doing a much more important things than running the backhoe. Same thing with Hector. He doesn't have to go out and patrol. Can he patrol and does he patrol at times? Absolutely. But I don't want him to be out patrolling. If he's out patrolling, he's not doing the chief duties that he needs to be doing. So what we want this person to do is help to cover court when court needs it, help permits when permit needs it, help senior citizens when senior citizens needs it. Because then that also helps Jackie to help me and that other person to help me as well. So it's a win-win for both of us. The utility, which I'll talk to you in a minute about. The next section goes into police and it shows janitorial. And it's, what we want to do is move that person part-time to full-time. He comes in at 25 hours. Because of where we are today, we're using those persons to clean more and more. We've always struggled with the jail section. And now it's even more so with the COVID-19. And so we want to move that person to a full-time so that we can better assure people that we have the places clean and sanitized as they need to be. The next one is a patrol officer. Right now, we have nine patrol officers. If we could get 10, it helps us cover bases to where during the busy hours, we'll have four officers on duty at all times and the others three. Right now, we have to have a lot of times where we have only two officers on duty. And that's problematic because if they get one call that takes care of that, takes that person away for any length of time, then we're short a person. And so having that three people to where the rotation happens, we just really, really need that extra officer. We didn't need that whenever we were, you know, our city limits ended at Stars or just right past Stars, and we still didn't need it when we went past the school. But now we're all the way to 803 and to Los Angeles United. Now this area from this side is building up behind us. So we need that officer. And so that is that officer there. As you can see, the next one is the ones that you approved where the vehicle and the live scan, that's the digital things that we approve for tonight to buy them now. So that, we're just showing you that because you've already made that decision. Couple printers we need, as you can see there. The next one says mental health officer. We had a grant that was $62,007 a year for an officer to be housed in Brownsville. And we didn't get to use that mental officer. It was just a grant. And so it did no value to. we didn't get to use that mental officer. It was just a grant and so it did no value to us. We thought it would help us whenever there was a mental patient where they would come and take over that patient, uh, and guard that patient, not guard, but be with that patient until something is done with that patient. But the way it's ended up happening is all of that officer does is ends up coming at the time that they're transported either to the hospital or to MHMR in Harlingen or, or another facility. Way it was designed in the beginning was as soon as you got a call and had a mental subject, you could call that officer and they would be there for, because it might take four hours for that to happen. That was an advantage to us. The way the program has ended up, it's not advantage to us. So we just want to do away with that. That doesn't affect the budget any because the sixty-two thousand dollars, we don't get it. So we don't send them anywhere. So, so it doesn't affect our budget at all. That's why you see it. The sixty-two and then the, in brackets. Um, right below that, street projects. I want to keep, uh, doing streets. When I say streets, it includes drainage too. Uh, forty thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars of that. Um, that's no magic number, it just accept what it, it ended up being. Uh, as you go down, library, things that we do not have budget money for. She would like to do a children's room. Uh, she understands that that's a lot of money and under the circumstances, they're not having kids come in there. So she understands that that's probably gonna be put. In fact, it is. I've got it in unfunded. That's the unfunded column. Uh, Angie understands that, so there's no problem. Uh, she would like some new front doors. We keep telling her the doors are fine. She said they look ugly. So that's another, uh, probably not quite ten, but, um, she said that was the budget, so, uh, that is also unfunded. The other thing that's unfunded is window shutters at the community center. The idea was, is that a lot of people use it for weddings and quinceañeras and you could have shutters that come down and, and even that a day, um, would cover those windows and, uh, help for people to utilize it, but also utilize it better for us because it would do the front and sides and everything. We wouldn't have to board up in case of an hurricane. So I would like to do that someday, but today's not the day, uh, as far as being able to fund that. The next grouping is IT stuff and you can see the, the budgeted amount starts with sixty-one hundred and goes six or eight items. Those are the, the, the items we need to continue to upgrade our systems. The next grouping is, starts with nine thousand there and that's the ones that you approved tonight. So we don't have to worry about those anymore. As you go down, there's, um, uh, planning and zoning update, uh, fifty-nine thousand four eighty-eight. That's unfunded. Um, it's really a hundred and eighteen and I'll explain that. Uh, CDC has agreed to pay half when we can pay half. Uh, at some point, we do need to upgrade our planning and zoning ordinance. Um, it's, uh, very old and antiquated, so we need to do that at some point in the future. Uh, it's not for this budget, so I wanted to show you that. Uh, and then you can see the overall increase, four percent. It would be seventy thousand six sixty-five. So if we do a four, three, two, one, or a four, two, or, um, even I heard a comment that maybe the low end gets more than that. Maybe they go to five or maybe they go to the six so that they're earning power and then you, you tier it down. Maybe that seventy will be a little bit less. So that's, uh, on the general fund. I've got a simmered one for the water, but I'll let you have questions on that one first. Any issues were there? Fifty-nine thousand, that's only fifty percent of it. It's a, it's a company and it's the cheapest we've found that comes in here and they look at, um, they look at your city, they look at your, um, uh, zoning ordinances and whenever somebody comes in, they say they want to build, um, um, apartment complex. Your zoning ordinance has all of those rules and regulations in them. Uh, when you want to build, um, a strip mall or a grocery store or a, a boutique or anything that you want to do in the city, there's rules and regulations in our planning and zoning ordinance. Our planning and zoning ordinance is twenty or thirty, maybe even forty years old. Uh, so. Sure? You might have wrote them. Um, and they're good, but they need to be updated for two thousand and twenty. Um, one of the things that happens is people always get confused because it, it says, uh, a lot in our ordinance says, uh, residents, you can do this and then you can do all the things in this other one and you can do some of the things in the other one. And so we want to put all that together and, uh, like you say, the, it's very expensive. That's like almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. CDC has said they'd pay half. Um, maybe later in the budget year, we, budget conservative, we spend conservative, we'll have some money to do that. But right now, that's not in the budget.
I agree with you on the, uh, administrative assistant. Where you can have some extra help as busy as you are.
It'll be w- well utilized and not only for me, but Jackie and Court. Um, I, I hate it when the lady in the community center gets sick and there's something pressing here and Jackie can't go run it. So we just say, oh, we're gonna close for the day. Uh, I don't like that. So this, this person will be able to do those things for that and as well as myself and, and, and help there. So.
And is that person gonna be full-time, part-time?
Full-time. It shows fifty percent because it'll get paid fifty percent out of the utility fund as well.
Okay, so then if I'm understanding this, her, he, him or her salary will be, will be fifteen thousand, will it?
Double that. I'm sorry, I pushed the button. Double that because that's fifty percent. And that includes, uh, that's at ten dollars an hour, but includes the insurance and uh, retirement and all the benefits. When you put that in there, it's, it's about five thousand or so dollars if I remember right, maybe seven. Uh, somewhere along in that, depending on, on the, uh, pay rate. Let me give this and then this will be a repetitive sum, uh, and be pretty easy to go quick and then we can go back to pay and then finish up tonight. As you can see, it kinda looks, uh, pretty much the same. It's just, uh, just our water and sewer fund. Um, as you can see at the top, we have the grant match for the canal, which we talked about earlier in the meeting. A hundred and fifty thousand and the engineering, uh, we're putting in the budget. Uh, the one fifty is in this year's budget. Um, the other thing we did this year is, um, put ninety-eight thousand nine eighty-eight. There's no magic number. It's just the dollars that were left when we did everything else, um, for street projects. Usually we do that out of the general fund. Years past, we had done this a time or two, has done it out of the water and sewer fund because they break our roads a lot. When, when there's a water leak or a sewer leak, oh, it hates, you hate it whenever, here's the grass and where did the leak happen? Five feet over in the street. So, um, it's legal to pay out of the street funds so, to do those. So if you'll remember from the other budget, general fund, we have, um, forty thousand, almost forty-one thousand. So between the two, we have about a hundred and forty thousand. As we go forward where we have a drainage problem that we need to fix or a street problem like the one we just did on Sixth Street, we can jump on it. We have the funds there, uh, to be able to do that. So that's, uh, pretty, pretty good, um, rainy day type of fund that's in our budget. Of course, you can use those to fund other things, but I don't recommend it. Uh, IT, if you'll see the IT there and then the IT a little bit low, they're, they're the lower. They're exactly half. They're, because what we do is, there's so much of our stuff that is citywide that helps with not only water and sewer and, but the general fund. And so we pay fifty percent out of the wa- out of this general fund and then twenty-five out of water, twenty-five out of sewer. So you can see the twelve desktop computers for thirty fifty. That's only twenty-five percent of the cost. Down below, you see where it says sewer and twelve desktop computer. There's another three thousand fifty dollars. So it's the same stuff that's on your first page I showed you, except it's this fifty percent of the cost. So it's the same things, uh, just where we get the monies from. Uh, as you can see down, about halfway down on that sheet where it says administrative assistant, that's twenty-five percent and, uh, Yolanda, that was what you were asking about. That's the other seventy-six hundred and sixty-two dollars. If you can see that, to pay for that, that employee. Then the servers, there's a stuff, the forty-five hundred, eleven fifty-five, eight and fi- five is what you approved tonight. So that's already, um, we're buying that now so that we don't have to put it in next year's budget. In the sewer department, uh, right about half page, you can see six pumps. Uh, we have pumps that go out all the time and so Carlos wants to do a capital improvement and, and, uh, get ahead of the curve on six of them that are, they're big pumps and, um, uh, have them done. And then you can see the other twenty-five percent of the, the administrative assistants. And then below that, you can see those desktop computers and all that computer equipment, just like you saw at the top. It's twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent. And then as you get down towards the bottom, you said overall four percent increase with benefits, twenty-five thousand five ninety-three. And so you can see that, that, the pay is about ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, um, kinda to your, uh, except for the director, the, most of the rest of the employees may, you know, are on the lower end scale. They're ten to twelve, thirteen dollars an hour. So, um, that twenty-five thousand five ninety-three probably wouldn't change very much. Uh, because it's just the, um, water and wastewater folks that, um, work in that, that facility. Uh, the, the guys that have certification do, do earn a little bit higher because they have certifications to run the water plant and run the sewer plant. So that kinda s- shows an, a big picture of both the general fund and the water and sewer fund. Any questions on that? Told you that wanted to go quick. Now we can do, go back to pay and then we'll, you can give me direction there and we'll, we'll leave that off and they'll come back, uh, a week from tonight with some options and then the department heads will also, um, present their budgets. And Juan, I can get these to you tomorrow. If you come by or, uh, call me and I'll come see you.
Mark. Is there any, uh, rhyme or reason why we have to do, uh, pay increases? Uh, we're here again for the entire staff and maybe looking at doing wage an hour one year so we can address them properly and then the following year doing the, the other half and addressing them properly instead of, you know, every two years or every three years and we're having to cut corners to, to meet that particular budget. As if we were just to apply, let's say this year, we would just address wage an hour. Uh, I'm just talking out loud. We would do wage an hour one year and then the following year, we would do the other half. Just a thought. We can do that.
Andy, as we just gave the IP, uh, director a humongous raise, now we're gonna give him another four percent. And that's.
Yeah, but that's just one person. And that was, that was, uh, according to, uh, law and according to what we needed to do to, to, uh, to be in compliance.
But it's still gonna be four percent compared to the guys that are making eight dollars an hour. You know, this is, this is my point.
I, I understand your point. What I'm saying is, let's address, you know, again, this is just talking out loud because we're gonna, another thing to think about is that we address wage an hour. Maybe not, you know, since now we don't have to worry about, uh, uh, those making a salary that the seventy thousands that we're talking about can all be addressed to wage an hour instead of everybody across the board. That would give wage an hour a little heftier, uh, uh, raise. But at the same time, we're not saying, hey, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not forgetting about the salaried people. We're gonna take care of you next year. Wage an hour, we'll just have, you know, they got their raise this year. They'll get their raise in two years, you know, if, if that's, uh, deemable at that point in time. But that way you can address the seventy thousand to just wage an hour and, uh, you know, go from there. I, just, uh, just a thought. Uh, I still think that we need to look at, uh, Mark separately and consider, uh, some type of raise for that situation. Just a thought. Well, in this case, we were talking, uh, four percent across the board. Uh, we would consider giving Mark a four percent raise. You know, uh, in this case. Uh, just a thought, uh, you know, because, uh, we all, we were all praising Mark earlier and this and that, but, you know, words can own, uh, words cannot buy a loaf of bread. So, uh, just food for thought, uh, as we're, uh, considering your one, two, three, four, uh, division. You know, I'm just saying, uh, uh, you know, for food for thought, instead of addressing everybody every three years or every two years, we address wage an hour one year and then the other half, the other year, and then we're able to, uh, really take care of, uh, wage an hour the way they should be taken care of with, uh, you know, a little bit better raise than, than, than just four percent. Because when you're looking at wages, I mean, the wage people, the salary people, uh, may not be four percent. Uh, we may consider three percent or two percent, but that's next year.
Sorry. We didn't do anything for them last year because we had a lot of, you know, major projects that were taking priority. And with everything that's happening right now, I think they need something to keep them going.
Mark said it's just a thought.
I don't want them to feel, you know, that we're not taking care of them and they start looking elsewhere.
Right. May- maybe this is where we need to look at Mr. Ortiz, uh, and looking at, uh, that breakdown uh, for this year, right? And then consider in the fu- in the future that we take care of one group and take care of them well. And then the next group, they know they're coming up, you know, and we take care of them the way they should be taken care of, you know. you know, and we take care of them the way they should be taken care of, you know, uh.
Didn't, uh, you have something like that in place a couple of years ago, Mark?
I didn't hear you.
Like a merit increase or, you know, like a step up and stuff like that?
We, we had a little bit in the, in the, um, for, for the patrol officers, um, but because of the way the, um, salaries went out of control with, um, DPS, Border Patrol and some of those, uh, we, we stopped doing that because we just couldn't afford to keep up with that. It was just impossible. Uh, just real quick and of course, um, thirteen. We have fifty-four hourly employees and nine, nine, um, salaried employees. There's, there's not, not many salaried employees that, that we have, uh, in our staff. We don't include the lifeguards, they're, they're temporary employees and, uh, kind of handled a little bit different. And then the contract labors are also handled different. Those account for eighteen employees.
That we had nine salaried?
Yes, sir. Nine.
Okay. Being new to the, to the, to the place here, what, uh, what would they be?
Okay. Uh, you can see on the right, you can just see the difference in the, it'll have a salary figure in there versus a, a dollar, uh, a two-dollar amount. And so you see Mark, myself, Mark, Pablo, Jackie, the first three. And then skip down to where it says information technology, um, Dale, you can see that one there. And then skip down a few more lines. You say chief under police, Chief Hector Gonzalez. Under him, Assistant Chief Juan Rodriguez and Commander Charlie Bonda. Those are the three in the police department that are salaried. Then you skip way down towards the bottom, um, where it says library department, Angie Lugo. She's the director of the library. Uh, you can see that one there. And then the last one is on the second page about the third or fourth row down of line down, public works, public work director Carlos, Carlos Salazar. That's the name.
I like the idea that are being thrown around, but, uh, I guess my biggest concern is the fact that, um, um, if we don't give all of the employees a raise this year, it means that they're gonna go two years in a row, in a row without a raise. And, uh, I don't have a problem with your plan, Mr. Lopez, but I think that maybe if we go ahead and give the employees a four percent now of everybody and then start with your plan next year, at least it'll be something that we can, uh, plan with and not deprive anybody of a raise this year because, like I say, I could understand it if everybody had gotten a, a raise last year, but they didn't. And if we don't give them a raise again this year, it's gonna be two years in a row and that's not good, uh, good business, uh, economically or mentally, uh, because, uh, we wanna have a good work environment here. We want people to wanna work for los frentes, uh, and, and, and do the best job that they possibly can. And we need to provide a decent wage in order to do this. So again, I, I, I think that, uh, we shouldn't deprive them of another raise this year. I think everybody should get a raise of one kind or another, but ideally four percent would be great. Uh, uh, and then next year perhaps we can go ahead and plan on implementing, uh, your plan, Mr. Lopez. It'll give us more time to do that as well.
Mark, you want to continue?
That's about all I have. Um, I guess I can come up with, I guess you want me to come up with different options because I've heard all the way from, um, half this year, not half, just the hourly employees this year and salaried next year, I've heard one, two, three, four percent, uh, staggered as you, uh, depending on the, the pay level. And I've heard, uh, let's do that in the future years, just keep it at four percent now. So, um, I, I don't know that I, I would like to at least come down with, uh, more than four or five options because it's a lot of work to, uh, so, so I, it would, it would be, takes a lot of work to do that. And so, uh, I don't want to do all four of them if I don't have to. If you tell me to do all four of them, I will sure do that.
Well, at four percent, it's, uh, I mean, the budget's okay, right? We have a balanced budget and everything, right? And we're able to do the projects that need to get done and everything, correct?
With the exception of the sixty thousand because of the, the table on the carts, um, we projected that that would go into, into place. That's the reason why I put it on before the budget so that we would know how to make the budget. It, it's, it's, it's hard to, to make a budget uh, backtracking. So I wanted to know the information on the cart going in and then I can build the budget to that number. And so because you tabled it, I have to now go and take that sixty thousand out that we counted on because I, I can't assure that it's gonna be approved. So I, I can't have a lot of different budgets floating around. This one for this because it affects everything. What, what, once we change one part of it affects, it dominoes to somewhere else. So because you tabled the cart, what I will do tomorrow is now take that sixty thousand dollars in revenue out and I will cut somewhere sixty thousand dollars. Um, because I, I don't know that you're gonna approve it and I can't, I can't go forward thinking, hoping that you'll approve it. So now I gotta go back and say, okay, we're not gonna do that. And so we'll slide something else from unfunded, uh, from funded into funded. I mean, I'm sorry, we'll slide something from funded that we're being able to fund with that sixty thousand. We'll now move that over to the unfunded line.
It's kind of like saying, you, you were counting your chickens before they hatched.
And not, not necessarily, but that's okay. Uh, we also put the raises in there and the, the, um, uh, pumps and, I mean, I, I, I can't not put anything in the budget. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I have to put, um, needed items that are in the budget. So I can't leave them all out and then come in here and then we could never be able to finish a budget.
I agree with the mayor as far as going from, uh, from one year with nothing to, uh, you know, taking care of, uh, of the hourly this year and that year, that's not feasible at this point in time. Uh, so we can take, if you want to, I can take that off the, uh, uh, off the, uh, you know, the, one of the options is not to go with the, with the hourly this year and, and the, and the salaries the following year. That oughta go, you know, help out a little bit. Uh, we do need to look at though, if, if we just go four percent across the board like the mayor is, is, uh, is, uh, proposing, uh, and you proposed, that we put it on the, on the deal for next year and say, okay, next year we're gonna look at the hourly again because, you know, they didn't get sufficient this year. And so we're gonna look at addressing the hourly again next year. And then we can get into that, that cycle where we take care of one group one year and the next group the next year. Uh, you know.
What, what we've done in, in, um, I didn't present it and, and they, I didn't ask them to present it on, on the police because they, every year they do a, a salary analysis and they're, what they did their study and if we didn't do anything, we would be way behind the eight ball. But by giving them a four percent raise, it puts them back in middle, midpoint of police departments. And when I say that is the norm, I can't, we can't look at South Padre because they pay exorbitant. We can't look at Border Patrol because they pay absorbent, but they've, they've done that. And so we keep them about midpoint to a little bit higher. I'd like to, you know, pay our people a little bit more. Um, I know the school district had done that, uh, especially for teachers. They didn't always do administrators, but for teachers, a little bit above the midpoint, uh, because they wanted to, uh, attract those. I want to do the same with our employees. And so we regularly do that and, and we make adjustments. The same way the guy in, in that, that cleans the restroom, the guy that, that mows the grass, the guy that does that. But there, there's a going rate for those things and whatever the going rate for those things is, and we're there pretty much for, for all of those types of, types of jobs and types of duties. And so we can't lose sight of that is we, we can't be paying a guy to mow the grass twenty bucks an hour. Or maybe I want to go do it because then I'll have to think I can just, just mow and do it. And, and not to, to, to belittle that position because they do a fantastic job and they do a good job at it. But I don't need a twenty dollar an hour guy doing that. I need a ten to twelve dollar an hour guy doing that. And that's the same as you go into a lifeguard. You, you see the lifeguards, they're about ten, uh, to eleven dollars for what that position is in the, the industry. That's about a right, right figure. And then you go to the, the supervisor. Now that's a little bit more responsibility because they're having to supervise the people and do those. And so then you get to twelve, thirteen, fourteen, maybe fifteen bucks an hour. So all of those are, are looked at on a continual basis. And so as a consumer price index goes up, those salaries need to go up like that. And so I understand what you're saying about the top, our, and, and just take me out of the, the picture. My department heads, I want them to be able to, to live the same standard of living today that they did ten years ago. And today we're not doing that. We're not doing that for the lowest wage earner. We're not doing it for, uh, my department heads either. And so those department heads, their standard of living has gone down by almost six percent over the last ten years. That's not good. And so there, there's two, two, two models and, and we've only ever done cost of living increases. And then we've done what we call, uh, position changes and increases through time. Most businesses do that, um, where we say, okay, uh, PD is thirteen bucks an hour, but that, that position now is not a thirteen dollar an hour position. It is now a fifteen dollar an hour position. And so we've changed that and we've done that with all of those, those figures. People like South Padre, they have a built-in percentage, two to three percent of a, of what they call a cost of living increase every year. And then they have the merit on top of it. And so if, if we adhere to something like that, which a lot of cities do, our people would already be making almost six percent more than what they're making today. And then the ones that, if you do the merit, that's on top of that. And we can't even meet the cost of living increase, let alone the merit. So we're, we're really behind the eight ball and, and seemingly not moving in that direction. Uh, but I will put together, this is the four percent. I'll put together, I guess, a, a tiered one that y'all can see next time that shows a, a four up to, down to a one, or do you want me to go five or six to the lower, uh, the, the ones that are making the lower amounts? Uh, and then just see how that goes and y'all can look at it and make a call. And we'll have several columns and then you can say, hey, you know, I like, that looks good.
Mark, when I was talking about, uh, taking care of the, uh, the wage, uh, earners, I wasn't talking about, uh, getting that twenty dollar, because I might apply for that one. But I was just talking, I might just, I was just talking about keeping a little closer tabs on the, uh, consumer price index, right? Uh, to where, you know, obviously the, right now there's minus five, you know? But if we could keep that to a three or, you know, three and a half, well, we're a little closer. It's not quite there, but at least, uh, a little closer. So I was just talking more about the price index than, uh, than pay raises for, uh, for the wage earner.
Okay, I, I understand. Good. Cool. I told my wife one time, you sleep when you die. And she says, if you don't start sleeping more, you're gonna die. We're good. Um, we'll get next, next Tuesday at six. Uh, we'll have department heads, they'll present theirs. It's gonna be easy because, uh, most of the line items, I mean, there's no, you know, electricity is electricity. It is what it is. And, um, there's very few items from, from last year and the previous year that are gonna be different next year. So, uh, it should be real quick and then that way we can focus on this piece of it and maybe be done. And we, uh, if we don't finish, we have to do that the following Thursday. Um, and I would like for us to be able to finish, to be able to not have to do that other sep- extra meeting. But if we need to, we can surely take it.
So are we gonna continue or is that it for tonight?
We're at three hours. I think everybody's done. We can think better next week at six o'clock and continue on with it and have some fresh, fresh ideas, thoughts and, and share some good things.
Next Tuesday, what day is that?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
You know, what we have thought, what we have suggested, I mean, it's not something that is written on concrete, you know? We still got time to think.
Absolutely. That's why it's a, it's a process instead of a one night deal. Uh, that way when we, we get through the end of it, we go, yep, this is good. Uh, we, we did it right. And that's, that's where we want to, want to end up in September when we finally approve it.
It's, uh, nine, twelve, and we stand adjourned.